At 4:05 PM, excuse me, Hamilton Regional School Committee. Meeting on May 14th. So the first thing, just open the floor to any citizens comments.
What would they do? Type those in the chat?
Type it in the chat, I guess at this point. So, you know, as a preface, we will be discussing. The potential cuts or budget. Reduction considerations. In today's meeting. So sorry, I'm trying to flip around through my. It says here up next should be the students representatives report, but I'm matching that is not going to be the case for today. So moving into new business for the FY21 budget reductions. I just want to take a minute to just sort of clarify and specify that, you know, the. This is a very touchy subject and we, you know, while these are not recommendations, our recommendations. Were made back in January about what our district actually needs. You know, for our budget and sort of making concessions to try and meet what the. Town could afford, you know, I think our capital finance committee along with our administration did a great job of. You know, finding what we need and then making reductions, moving down from the 13%. You know, ask to it to at 8.3% and now we have. Have to relook at those numbers after meeting with, you know, sender tar and representative Hill. Excuse me, and anticipating a 20% reduction in. State aid. So. You know, we need to relook at these numbers again, these are not recommendations, these are things that oh, we're being forced to look at. We do not believe that they're in the best interest of our district. And I just want to remind everybody that. You know, when we're talking about this, these are people we're talking about and today we're not discussing people, right? We are discussing positions and. You know, that, that. It's difficult, right? Because especially in a small community like ours, this is very personal. And, you know, and at the end of the day, I know I've been in a, I've know I've seen it and spoke to you, a lot of you about this. This has not been the easiest couple of weeks of our time here on the, on the board. So I just want to. Just remind everyone that as we're speaking to be speaking about the positions and speaking about the bottom line and not about the, the people involved. Or the people that are, you know. That this could and will, you know, inevitably affect. You know, that being said, you know, give any of you guys sort of a, a second to. You know, reset if you have anything to say before I hand it over to Julie and Vinnie. You know, now, you know, I yield the floor to you. All right, Julie, you want to take over? Thank you.
Sure, if, if the host could share the screen with screen sharing privileges, that would be great. We have prepared a slide deck just to guide you through the items that we have generated for your consideration this evening. I think it would probably be best for us to, Vinnie and I, to go through the whole list first. And that way you can see how we've calculated the level of reductions required to get to the target. And then we can have a discussion about the items that are on the list and. David, thank you so much for reminding all of us that. These are really hard conversations to have, even in a what if or a possibility scenario. With every decision that we make, we know that there are many lives that are impacted by these decisions, both within our organization, but also in the personal lives of our employees. So. Thank you for making that top of our conversation. With that, I'll share my screen and ask Vinnie to get us started, reminding us of. What you all approved back in February when we initially. Shared our budget. Recommendations.
So tonight we're here to review our final operating budget recommendations from the last budget you guys approved on February 12th, I believe. As you can see here, our proposed FY21 original budget showed an increase of approximately 8.5% for our net operating budget. The categories here, you can see the operating expenses at 38.2 million. From there you take off our expenses and our revenues to arrive at our net operating budget.
And so one thing that we know is destined to change in this final budget is the potential for us to experience a shortfall in revenue compared to what we were. Anticipating previously. On May 5th, we were fortunate enough to have a collaborative conversation, including the boards of selectmen from both towns, the town administrator and town manager. And Senator Tar and Representative Hill joined us to kind of give us a sense of where we're at as a state and the impact that may have on us locally. And so what we learned at that time was that things are looking safe for the FY20 year end. The state will have to borrow to close out the fiscal year because unlike the federal government, the state is not allowed to end the year in a deficit. And so it's looking like the last I heard, the state was planning to borrow $3 billion to close the gap for FY20. And in FY21, it's not looking as good or as positive, I should say. Last I have heard, there's a projected revenue shortfall from anywhere between two and a half to $5 billion. And there, the, the one, the good news for the state of Massachusetts is that we do have a very healthy rainy day fund. And I believe there's about three and a half million dollars in the rainy day fund. Borrowing this year, I believe, would allow those monies to be available the next fiscal year. So in terms of local state aid for public schools, we think about this in a couple of categories as a regional school district, chapter 70. Which Hamilton Wannam receives about 3.9 million. Circuit breaker, which Vinnie, what do we typically receive in circuit breaker?
It's just under a million dollars. I think this year we're set for 960,000.
And that varies each year depending on the level of reimbursement and also the, the student needs within the district. And then because we're a regional school district. We also receive state aid for regional transportation, which is approximately.
415,000.
So that's those, that's kind of the numbers that we were planning on, but very clearly we were advised based on the last two, the average. Of the last two economic downturns to begin planning for a 20% reduction in all local state aid, including those three categories that Vinnie and I just talked about. So what does that mean for the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Community? A 20% reduction in chapter 70 is about 997,000. For circuit breaker, it would be about 195,000 and then for transportation about 83,000 and that's how we get to the 1.274 million less in stated projections. For those who may not be familiar with the school funding formula, we also have defined what each of those. Areas of funding. Are defined, are defined to support and I won't read that to you, but you have them there on the screen for you. So as of the May 6th school committee meeting, we were given the charge to go back to the leadership team and to the FY20. Previously, school committee approved budget and to begin to identify where, where would these reductions be taking? Where could we possibly find reductions in spending to offset this reduction in revenue? And we really had a couple of areas or a couple of ways that we went about making this decision. You know, obviously, if we thought there were areas to reduce in the budget, we would have presented that back in January and February. So we knew that this was going to have some long lasting impacts on the district from the start. We also are in the midst of a global health crisis. We know that our students are. Experiencing a traumatic event and for each student and each family, the way they're experiencing this traumatic event of COVID-19 looks really different. We know fully that our students are going to come back with significant gaps compared to how they normally would be transitioning to their next grade level. We've been out of school for eight weeks now. We have about six more weeks to go. Students have missed about of the, a third of the school year of the in-person learning that, that normally occurs in an academic school year. Outside of the academics, they're also missing a lot of social and emotional connections. We know from talking with our students and serving our students that, you know, some students are experiencing. Deep, a deep sense of isolation, sadness, depression, anxiety, worry. Missing out on things and just the, the impacts that we all feel from this social isolation. That tells us as educational leaders and as experts in child development that our students are going to come back needing a lot of additional supports. And I'll talk a bit more about that towards the end of the presentation. But I say that now, just to frame for you that, that, that is at the forefront of our mind and we're making decisions based on. One, three really key questions, one primary question, what are the supports our students are going to need most? When we can return from this extended school closure? What are the supports our students will need most if we remain in a school closure or if we go back to a remote learning environment? Sometime during the next school year, which at this point seems highly likely. So we have to keep that in mind as well. We're also looking at how do we conserve and protect the classroom? So some of these decisions will have decade-long effects on the school district. However, we're trying to ensure that we can maintain our class sizes. They're already large to begin with at about 24 students per class across the district. And how do we make sure that there's still teachers connected with kids in their classroom, whether that's a physical classroom or a virtual classroom? And then the third guiding question throughout this process was how do we keep equity at the forefront? We want to make sure that our students who are most vulnerable, our students who already have gaps and or learning disabilities. Are getting the proper supports that they need. We also need to think about our English language learners and the types of supports that they need. As we make these decisions throughout this process. So the way we've set this up for you is we've broken it down into categories. Vinnie and I will talk about the different categories, what reductions we've identified for your consideration. And then I'll walk you through some of the implications of those reductions. So first we'll talk with admin, we'll talk about administration, you know, I believe deeply as a school system, when we're looking at. This type of level of cuts to the school budget, we have to look in every, every single unit, if you will, or category of employee and really think about. Where can we find efficiencies and what will be the implications of that? So. The first is looking at curriculum administrators and this, this proposal here talks about eliminating 2.75 curriculum administrators. I won't read for you the dollar amount there, you can see it in the chart, but there's implications to this. This is not something any school district would ever want to be operating without. This includes a district level curriculum. Curriculum director, it also includes two content area specific literacy and math elementary administrators. And so some of the implications of that is that the curriculum leadership is going to, if this were to happen, would fall solely on elementary teachers and principals. The district would be left with zero formal, if you will, curriculum leadership. We would be relying heavily on a distributed leadership model and lots of informal leadership. At the building and classroom level. Also, there would be decreased oversight of curriculum development and data analysis. And these positions are critical and developing data days in ways where we dive deep into state and local assessments to ask ourselves who are the students we're serving well. And where, who are the students we could be serving better? This also shifts responsibility of planning and executing district-wide professional development to the building and to classroom teachers. The next area for consideration is a reduction of a 1.0 business office staff member that would then. This is our, our human resources benefits and payroll administrator. As you know. During last year's budget challenge, we already reduced an FTE from the business office in an effort to amplify our HR support. For our 300 plus employees, this eliminates that formal support. It also will require essential responsibilities to be distributed across the remaining central off-staff employees. Who already wear many hats. School leaders will have to pick up additional human resources responsibilities and we would have to add a point five payroll clerk. To provide needed support to payroll. And there is an asterisk there under reduction. When applicable, we have considered the salary of the employee or the salary of the position benefits. And any unemployment that may be possible. Can you just bear with me for a second? Are you able to see my screen still?
No.
Okay, all right, let me go back to that then. Every once in a while, it makes it hard to. Change the slides, hold on.
Can see it now.
Okay, Vinnie, do you want to talk about the next category, which is IT and facilities?
Yep, so currently we're looking to reduce a 1.0 vacant IT technician. So earlier in the current school year. We had one of our members of our IT team. Retire and we had an internal promotion. We promoted an IT technician into the data management specialist position. And all year we operated with two of our three IT technicians. This basically makes it permanent into the future that we operate in this. Format, it's mean, it has meant a lot of additional work, not only for Alan and his entire team. The other office staff members will have to pick up additional responsibilities. In addition to that, we are. Considering eliminating two maintenance workers position. I think about three or four years ago, we added the maintenance office team of three. This will keep one team member there and eliminate the other two positions. This could lead to increased costs of contracted services and preventive maintenance work will be, will be backed up in our school dude. Application platform that we use to track. All the maintenance that we do throughout the school will have to put into. We'll have to have some work done to track kind of what preventive maintenance isn't getting done and what still needs to, still needs to occur. And in addition to the two maintenance positions, we were anticipating eliminating the maintenance foreman stipend. If there is not much of a maintenance department left, there wouldn't be any oversight of the maintenance team, therefore eliminating that stipend as well. The main implication of this is that our Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations, Tom Gary, will have to pick up. A lot of the responsibilities that currently fall under the foreman.
I don't know why it doesn't let me change the slide when I'm sharing my screen. That's annoying. Must have to keep going back and forth, I guess. So the next category is where we start to talk about teacher reductions. See if this helps if I. Don't make it large. When we talk about teacher reductions, we're looking to eliminate the 1.0 vacancy of the out of district chairperson. This vacancy, we have held vacant since January after a resignation. And really it was to test out the feasibility of reducing this position in this situation. We know firsthand exactly what will happen if this position is eliminated because we've tested it out for the last five months. And what it, what it does is it increases the workload for other special education administrators. To manage the out-of-district caseload, which includes site visit monitoring, meeting attendance, paperwork requirements. And also oversight of team meetings. So it's a, it's a simple math problem. If you have fewer people, the number of meetings doesn't change, it just has to get dispersed and disseminated to other people. This out-of-district chairperson also held many of the secondary meetings, so they worked side by side with our secondary special education administrator to manage that. Obviously, not having someone in this position has doubled the workload for that individual. This also because the, the out-of-district placement management will be dispersed over the elementary. Special ed administrator, the director of student services and the secondary special ed administrator. This decreases the amount of time they're, they're available to support the staff and to provide supervision. Because like I said, the meetings that need to occur annually are very time consuming and require thoughtful preparation and attendance. So. If we weren't in this situation, we would be advocating to fill this position. But given our scenario, we're putting it here for your consideration for elimination. We've been working really closely over the past week and a half to assess different possibilities of scheduling for the middle and high school. So the principals at the middle and high school, the assistant principals and also our director of counseling have been looking at different variations of scheduling. And what would happen if we were to maximize the contract in terms of what curriculum leaders can teach? So right now they all teach two. This would require that they all teach four classes. Seventh and eighth grade would have to shift from the middle school teaming model to a junior high model. And of course, with that comes a significant impact on our current structures that provide social emotional supports for our students. Some high school electives will not be able to be offered due to less staff flexibility. And some of our high school class sizes will need to increase. But we believe that we have a schedule model, we're still testing it, that could allow the district to reduce 3.6 FTEs. With those concessions that I just mentioned. And that's between the middle school and high school. We'll continue, there's a couple of slides that are related to teaching positions. Next, we looked at all of the stipends across the district. So as you know, from our previous conversations collectively. When we look at all in stipends, it's about 400,000 for the district. Some of those are contractual and you don't have a choice without renegotiating the contract to eliminate them. But you could choose to not fill 22 interest-based club advisor stipends. This would impact all of the schools. And then you would have a choice to either eliminate the extracurricular interest-based clubs altogether or move them to a 100% user-based model to cover. Those stipends for teachers. And you know, that stipend accommodates or compensates rather. Staff members for time, extra time outside of the instructional day in planning and then delivering that interest-based club to the kids. Also, we looked at the teacher in charge stipend. So this is something that also affects all of our schools. Each building has the opportunity to post and hire a teacher in charge each year. If we don't have this option, there will be a lack of building support when principals are out of the building at district meetings or. Engaging in professional development out of the building or if they experience illness or extended absences. The third consideration here is to reduce our elementary specialists. So this would impact art, physical education and music. Each, each of these folks, we already have some part-time positions that work across more than one building, some mostly two buildings to deliver art. PE and music to all of our kids. Initially, we were kind of bound by some contract language that stated that preps could only happen four days a week. If this were to occur, the union would have to agree to allowing elementary teachers to have the same amount of prep, but they would be guaranteed a prep every single day. And it would allow us to make a slight reduction in this area and we'd be able to use our current staffing more efficiently. So that is something for you to consider. As we continue to look at. I think was that the, did I miss one? Okay, some other reductions to the, the teachers would be. Not choosing to eliminate a vacant middle school reading specialist position. The implications of this is that it will increase caseload for our remaining staff and the small group student to teacher ratio would increase. That position is currently vacant. That was another thing we tried to look at if there was already a position that was vacant to start there. And see what the, the feasibility was of not filling it so that we weren't having to look at, at layoffs or non-renewals for staff. Another consideration is to. Eliminate the 1.0 FTE library media specialist at the middle school and high school. This is a position that you all just gained back, I think, two years ago because it was. Something that NEASK looks for when they come and do their accreditation visits. This is a vacancy currently and what we would suggest is that. You, you can't leave the learning commons empty. So at minimum, you would have to bring out a 1.0 teaching assistant. The, the implications of that is of course the level between a certified staff and non-certified staff, the level of support. Would be minimal for students in the learning commons. Their primary focus would really be on shelving and maintaining the physical needs of the learning commons. And again, it could be a potential NEASK finding or impact accreditation moving forward. Another item for you to consider would be eliminating world language in grade six. So if we no longer offered world language at all in grade six, then there would be. You could potentially conserve 1.2 FTEs for the savings that you see there or the reduction that you see there. And as you know, currently we have seven kindergarten classes across the district. Because of increased enrollment, those, those seven kindergarten classes allows us to have class sizes. With the exception at Cutler, we do have slightly smaller class sizes at like 19, 20, but at Bucker and Winthrop, they're at like 21, 22, 23, depending on the class. If we eliminate a seventh kindergarten class and we experience the same level of enrollment. You'll be looking at 24, 25 kids per class across all three elementary schools. We're currently in the process of pre-registration, so we don't have exact numbers, but enrollment also goes throughout the summer. So. Just something to keep an eye on. Just making sure I didn't slip anything. Next, we'll look at our teaching assistance. So we currently have a system to provide reading intervention at the elementaries where each building has one. Full-time reading specialist and then they have language arts teaching assistants that support individual students who need supplemental support. If, if you were to make this elimination, you would leave each elementary school with one reading specialist and one teaching assistant. Again, I'll just remind you of our current situation and the gaps that we know students are going to be coming in with. So the implications of this is obvious. There will be decreased supplemental literacy support for students. Professional development will be needed to enhance tier one. That's in classroom instruction. So teachers will need. A variety of tools to implement evidence-based instructional practices and differentiated instructional practices such as universal design for learning. Another consideration is to eliminate three full-time equivalents of the six preschool teaching assistants. So current, our current model is one certified teacher. And two preschool teaching assistants who support class sizes up to 15. Sometimes I think 18 in our, in our three preschool classrooms. This would reduce each classroom down to one certified teacher and one teaching assistant. Of course, that instantly causes an increased student to teacher ratio. It also reduces the flexibility and super, and, and. It, it reduces the flexibility and increases the supervision constraints. Remember. Remember, these are three, four and five-year-olds. Some of them are still learning how to toilet and are in the process of potty training. We do not have bathrooms in our preschool classrooms, so students have to leave the classroom. To, to use the, you know, the group bathroom facilities. Another consideration is to exclude the new investment that we have in our current FY twenty approved budget. Of the point four therapeutic teaching assistant. This would mean, this would allow us to maintain our current level of therapeutic support. But what, what we're finding is that students are coming in needing, pre-COVID, coming in needing. More and more therapeutic supports. To manage, you know, maladaptive behaviors, self-regulation, self-organization. And you know, sometimes explosive and unexpected behaviors in the classroom. And so the intent behind this investment was to increase staff and student safety. Next, we'll talk a little bit about office personnel. So one consideration is to eliminate a point five. High school office personnel. This would shift responsibilities to other office personnel. At the high school level only. Another consideration is to reduce our elementary secretaries from twelve months to eleven months. This is something that was just changed in the last negotiations. This will lead to a reduction in salary for those folks. But it would also align their schedules with the principal's work here, which we think would be favorable. The next consideration is to eliminate the point five maintenance secretary. This is a person who only works halftime and supports that office. The responsibilities would be shifted to other office personnel and also. The office support in the athletics department, point two five. Of that FTE is in support of the maintenance department in terms of like building usage and things like that. If you've ever requested usage, it goes through that person. So that those responsibilities would just be distributed. And finally, we're letting you think about the possibility of. Decreasing the district's match for athletic user fees. And so this would then shift the responsibility. For all athletic programming to seventy-five percent user, twenty-five percent district. And families would be responsible for covering the costs of that. With, when trying to come to this number. Vinnie also had to think about increasing our scholarship fund and our relief fund because they all kind of go hand in hand. And so this does consider those factors. And then lastly, and Vinnie, feel free to jump in on any of these. We have a reduction due to Vinnie's negotiations with our providers from our original forecast for our health insurance premium. Of twenty-seven thousand dollars. So all of these considerations together lead to the one point two seven four anticipated reduction in local state aid. Couple of things before I turn it over to you all to debate and discuss. I just want to remind you that we are in. Probably the highest level of unknown that we've ever been in public education and not just in public education, but as a, as a society. We don't know what school is going to look like. We don't even know yet if we'll be able to have summer programs in person or not. But we do know that when we come back to school, there are going to be lots of unanticipated costs that are not included in the budget that you already approved. We are going to need to purchase PPE or personal protective equipment. There's lots of talk that lunch, no longer will kids go to the cafeteria for lunch, so that will happen in the lunch or in the classrooms. That requires supervision for all students, young and high school, middle school. And then we also have to balance that with our teachers' need and for a duty-free lunch. So what will supervision look like, particularly if we're reducing. A significant number of positions. There could be additional transportation costs. There's some talk of, you know, possibly running. Either staggered schedules or alternating schedules or, you know, midday schedules. Some, some kids come in the morning, some kids go in the afternoon. We don't have any guidance yet, but we're looking around the world. To see what some other districts or some other schools are doing internationally to try to get a little bit of foresight as to what we might be. What we might be looking at next year. Absolutely, we will need additional hand washing stations. The sinks in all of the classrooms are not functional, so we would need ways for. Students and staff to be washing their hands at every transition, additional hand sanitizer stations, additional cleaning supplies, all for the obvious reasons. And then much like when you go to the grocery store, what we see from schools that are opening up around the world. I'm thinking of a school in Germany where I actually had the chance to see some photos. They're mark, they're putting markings on the floor that show which way students walk, how far away for students to stand and staff. And we're anticipating that we'll need to purchase some additional signage and floor markings. In order to keep everybody safe and physically distanced appropriately. The thing that's not on this list is furniture. We fully, if, if we have to go to. A model where kids need to be six feet apart in classrooms, I just remind you that in all of our elementary schools, we only have tables. And so even being able to physically fit the tables that we have, there's limits to the numbers that you could fit in a classroom. And it's really impossible for two students to sit at a table and be physically distanced. So there could be need for additional furniture as well to make that happen. Some other things that I've been thinking about are just the, you know, plastic shields at the front offices. That go around the secretary's desks. Maybe that'll be a requirement around students' desks. We just don't know yet. But that is, you know, clearly an added cost, all things that we weren't thinking about at the time that you approved the budget. We do also want to remind you of our capital requests. I know that the towns have been talking about potentially holding this off to like a fall town meeting when we have a clearer picture of what's happening in the. In the state. I would recommend and urge you to continue to put this forward if we're able to have the June twentieth town meeting. Because we would need to do this work in the summer in order to prepare for return to school. It's really hard for us to do big construction projects like replacing the sidewalks at the middle school or installing safety and security. Infrastructure and equipment when kids are in the building and when those schools are functioning. Because you know our schools are busy day and night. There's not really any downtime. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to. Provide clarification if you have any.
I have a ton of questions. How should we approach this? That's Peter.
So Julie, can you go back to slide deck thirteen for a second? Do we have a number, like I'm looking at five, I'm looking, just guessing five hundred to a million right here on this deck, right?
I would think that would be on the, the low end, you know, depend, if we're talking about needing to purchase significant amount of furniture. Now, I will remind you, we do have classroom furniture and equipment in our district budget. You're marked for response to COVID. But that is something that we've already calculated and we would just not follow through with what we were initially planning. We would reallocate those funds to respond to COVID in a strategic way. That would allow us to then be able to use that furniture toward what we were trying to accomplish. But we have a hundred and twenty in the capital budget for that alone.
All right, let me stew on that. Peter, go ahead, why don't you ask your questions?
Well, I don't know, are we debating these or are we just, is this just out there now for us to consider? And. Are we debating these things or questioning these or are we saying things, talking about? Items that we maybe agree with, maybe disagree with? How are we, what, what is our format here, I guess?
So I, I think it's safe to say that we're sort of in char, uncharted territory here. And that we are taking these as. A possible solution, trying to pick my words carefully, because again, these are not recommendations. But as possible solutions, you know, that Julie and Vinnie have really. Gone in deep and trying to sort of. Spread the hurt, I guess, amongst every department to try and not really. Have one particular department carry the weight of the reduction. And, and at the same time, trying to keep the classrooms as untouched as possible. So you know, with that in mind, this is obviously an opportunity to. You know, discuss. I, I, it's hard to say the pros and cons, right? Because there's really no, there's no pros to this. It, it, it's just sort of trying to find the. The best solution out of a very, 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 very terrible problem. So you know, with that, I don't know if that helps clarify at all, you know, but I, I don't think we have much of a protocol here on, on sort of what we're, we're. What we're trying to do. So I'm more curious sort of what you're thinking and where you're coming from and let, let's start the discussion from there.
Yeah, well, there was also things that, I have questions, but it came up in executive committee last week. So I can't bring, you know, executive session, so I can't add. Other things we were considering.
Peter, you do have an exec, you have executive sessions after this. This, this part of the meeting should be really devoted to debating and discussing the elimination of these items in these positions. Without me personally identifying.
Right. I mean, I, it's just, it's gut-wrenching because, you know, when you look at eliminating TAs. I mean, we're talking about kids having significant gaps in their education and their social emotional well-being. And we're talking about giving them less adults in the room to support that. We're talking about larger class size with less support. We're talking about that, how are we going to keep them physically distanced?
Julie, sorry, Peter. Julie, just to, have you heard any guidance about federal funding for the back to school with the PPEs? And the other distancing issues?
Not yet. We are tracking all of our unexpected costs and COVID-related costs and anticipation of that. We do know that through the CARES Act, we have access to, I believe, seventy-six thousand dollars, Vinnie, but we will apply for it. I don't know how that'll be awarded or not.
Correct. The seventy-six thousand is, you either have a choice of accepting it in FY twenty or FY twenty-one. And I would highly recommend twenty-one, obviously, as this year we're projected to end in the positive.
Thank you.
If I, so if we, let's, for instance, take the twenty-five percent match for sports. What if, what would be the savings if it was zero match, I guess? Vinnie, do you know?
Yeah, I can give you that number in one minute. If you want to add the next one while I grab it.
I, I, I was looking at the slide deck and eliminating the maintenance technician positions. I mean, contractors, I mean, this is certainly going to cost us more. It's the same logic of, as bringing services in-house rather than contract them out, you know, with education. Contractors get a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Plumbers and electricians even more. And if we were to have contractors do what our maintenance technicians do. It would certainly cost us a lot more than the twenty-five bucks an hour we pay them now, I guess.
I'll just point out too, like, none of these, none of these are very. I mean, all these cuts are, all these potential cuts are really ugly. Yeah, the, the impact is not just in twenty-one, right? You get the financial, you get the financial. Impact in FY twenty-one, but there's a long-term. Long-term crisis that's, that's going to happen. Right? Because we're talking about eliminating. Educational supports, we're talking about eliminating, you know.
It's a death spiral for our district.
Eliminating curriculum positions, you're talking about like, you know, a diffuse, a diffuse curriculum. You know, where it's uncoordinated from school to school or, you know. Grade to grade. I mean, this is, this is. It's really going to be. Devastating. I mean, I could use stronger words, but that's not.
Gene, you and I have said this multiple times, the towns have to find another source of revenue besides property taxes, and I'm hoping this is.
Well, that's a topic to be discussed. We have to, this actually has nothing to do with the towns, right? Because what we're thinking of, or what we're talking about at the moment is actually keeping our same assessments to the town. As we approved back in February. This is nothing more than making up the shortfall. State, right? So, so there, there, those are two sort of different conversations here. In, in, you know, as Gene said, that this is, you know. Good solutions, right? And, and it's really tough. I, I think that. You know, I don't want to get sort of too deep into the weeds here, but you know, with. The cost of contracted services, specialized licensed services, those, we don't have. Members with those licenses currently on staff, right? So we have to outsource those anyway. This is the most gentle way I could put that. You know, and again, I'm not saying. That I don't think that is a hurtful move to the district as a whole. I think every single one of these cuts. You know, starting with the very top, I, I think that's at the top with the large number for a reason, you know, that, that. The potential reduction in curriculum leadership is not the direction that we want Hamilton to be going in.
I'm especially concerned with the four point three ELA TAs. I mean, we have significant, students with significant reading gaps in those elementary grade levels. That, and it's just going to be. Like Gene said, it's going to, it's not, not this year. These kids are going to be behind the learning curve for a while. If they don't get that base of ELA at the, in the early years.
Right, and we know that's sort of where our district is actually taking the biggest hit financially already, right? I mean, this is, those positions are going to cost us money down the road. We, we, we know that, right? And, and this is a really clear indicator that when you're looking at out of district tuition. Where a majority of those students are going, where the shortfall seems to be. You know, this is going to impact that. You know, so that, that is a really good point to bring up in this, in, in this forum. Where we have a very high number of attendees watching live. You know, that, that these are the things that need to be, to be spoken about, right? So we keep hearing about how to cut costs with our out of district tuition. How is our out of district tuition so high? Why is it so high? Why is it so high? Why is it so high? Well. This is why it's going to be high, you know, in, for years to come, right? This is going to take years to recover from. You know, like Julie said, it's a good, some of these cuts are going to take a decade to recover from.
Peter, just to answer your question, if you reduced it another twenty-five percent, it's ninety-three thousand.
It actually goes down then?
No, 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 that's on top of the hundred and eighteen.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
So I, I do have a question, sort of, I guess, related to that, right? So I know one of the reasons that we were looking at seventy-five percent, or I can imagine one of the reasons they're looking at seventy-five percent. Instead of a hundred is one, the, you know, vocal. Support we had and actually trying to move that number to the fifty, you know, a few years ago. But the other I know is the loss of, you know, potential loss of sports within our small district, right? Is, is, you know, moving that financial burden solely onto the parents. We could lose some of our smaller programs. We already have, you know, significantly less sport, sporty programs that we had back when I was a student. Which, you know, within the district and, you know, we have to have these co-ops with other towns to actually have. Our students be able to participate in certain, certain activities and, and sports. And, you know, at the same time, just the high level of. Student interest we have, it is a seventy-three, seventy-four percent of all students in the district participate in a sport, right? So it's trying to sort of maintain that, especially in the idea. Right? So it's trying to sort of maintain that, especially in the idea of going back. If 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 if, you know, for some reason, everything we can go back to sort of a normal in September is the need that. These sports and in in other things too, right? Our clubs, any sort of social clubs, theater, things like that. Where that's going to be help heal our our students with the severe. Social and emotional needs that they're going through right now, you know, my. You know, we we all have kids here. We all know how nuts they're going and how bad they, you know, want to get outside and be with their friends and and, you know. And hug their teachers, if you guys know my Rocco at all. You know, but like that they they need that. And so we need to sort of try and figure out. You know, what we can do to make sure that's there for them. You know, and so it's tough. So I could see that. I I do wonder, sorry, not to ramble, but. You know, if we're looking at a delayed opening. Sports wise. Like, say, fall sports are postponed, you know, this spring. What does our cost savings look like? You know, there, and I know that's a huge variable, right? But like, you know. Again, I was in a meeting with my other school earlier today and we are, you know, having planning. For whether we're making two sets of plans for the fall, whether we're going to be in the classroom and what our classes are going to look like, and if we're going to be starting distance learning. And I think that, you know, unfortunately, that's. What we all need to be doing is, you know, is it going to be option A or option B? And what the what does that look like? Because I do think that's a. A difference in in cost, and I don't necessarily know that it's a cost savings if we're not, if we're not in the classroom. Right? That's the one thing that sort of we have, we're making all these cuts based off of what our ideal in class. To, you know, twenty twenty one. School year look like. And, you know, there's a lot of. Reason to believe that this could actually increase costs if we have to go remote for. You know, an extended period of time next year as well.
Just a couple of points to consider with the user fee. It's my understanding that last time we were a hundred percent, we lost hockey and softball. And those are both two sports that we've been able to bring back with the sharing the user fee. Also, I'll just remind you, not that you need it, of the condition of our track and fields. And so to think that our families and students, you know, are displaced often because those become unplayable and they're paying a hundred percent of the user fee. Again, you know, what's best of the worst decisions, but just two other things to think about when we think about athletics.
I think it would be detrimental if we went to a hundred percent user fees. It's for the whole students to be able to do sports. And we've got to be able to compromise a little bit. These are, these are hard times. I don't see any time real soon, especially with what's going on in the economic conditions. Of, you know, the towns being able to support more. And unfortunately, we have to make some hard considerations. And at the same time, we came in with a really high budget. Because we've got so many issues that we're trying to tackle. And now we've got to figure out, you know, where we're going to go with our budget. And, you know, the only cuts we've made, or not, I shouldn't say that we've made, that we're looking at is just to reduce. The. State aid that we have. And, you know, I know the towns are making comment, have made comments they would like to see. At a lot lower, you know, based on, you know, people are have lost jobs. People have taken eighty percent cut in pay for some jobs. So we need to really be mindful of everything, not just. I I totally feel for our teachers, our staff, our our students, and we just, we have to take into all the considerations. And I'm looking at things and. One of the things is, I just don't think that a hundred percent user fee is one way to go because we need a little relief for the family. During this hard time, too.
Can I ask a question, Vinnie? If we were to go to a hundred percent. How much would that increase our scholarship fund?
So technically, right now, at fifty percent, now that's the approved budget. The scholarships would have been about ten grand at the district match of twenty five percent, which is what's on your screen. The scholarship is at fifteen grand. If you make it a hundred percent, it's twenty grand, so it kind of just increases fifty percent at a time.
Vinnie, how does it impact the relief fund?
So right now it goes from forty grand at fifty percent to sixty grand at twenty five percent and eighty grand at a hundred percent. So again, it increases fifty percent at a time.
So. What did you say the number was if we increased user fees?
If you go to a hundred percent, your total savings is about. Two hundred and fifteen grand, I think.
And so, but that's only realized if sports actually happen.
Correct.
So. Sort of more of a generic question here. So. Today's discussion is about what to do. If. The state budget comes in at the twenty percent less. It doesn't really have any impact on the town's assessment. Right?
Correct.
Is that right? So. These cuts. If the state aid actually comes about being.
You froze, Michelle.
Will have to occur. What?
I think Julie froze.
Julie froze. Okay. So. If the state aid doesn't materialize, we have to cut. Things because we won't have the money to pay for them. So. What's the purpose in doing it now versus doing it later if it's not actually changing what we're asking the town to do?
I.
Other than for personnel purposes, I can see where we need to let people know that. They won't be employed in the fall and they should get another job, but I.
Right.
See why we should. Vote on anything at this point because that only puts us in a position where we can never recover that money.
I think it would be fiscally irresponsible to not look at. The advisement of what Bruce and Brad had told us of cutting the twenty percent aid. It's, I mean, we don't even know if the towns, if we do have a town meeting and. If they're going to pass this budget because it is a really high budget. And we don't know where where the towns are at at this. Are the citizens going to even vote for this? Why? We need to take steps. All the other school districts are looking at it. And I do know. Speaking from legal that we are, I do know that our school district was the hardest hit.
But it it doesn't alter what the town is voting on by at all. Their assessment is going to be identical. These cuts would have to have, it's no different than if we were to have approved our budget. And it already was approved and we already had the town meeting, right? Then the state comes back and tells us we're not going to get one point three million dollars, then we would have to cut. Like, the purpose of us voting to reduce our budget now, we're not reducing our budget, we're reducing our revenues and we're reducing our budget. So we're basically saying, take these and these, drop them both down. But you're at the same level, like it's the same assessment. We're not changing what we're asking the voters to do.
What what I think, so I I hear what you're saying, right? And I actually see the logic in what you're saying too. In in.
It's a question.
Well, no, but I I know, I I understand that here. So. I I think there's that that's sort of two different things. I think right now our discussion is these. Potential cuts, right? And whether or not we then. Make these cuts and then vote to change. The number in the vote, i i i number in our budget in the vote, I I think can be two different conversations. Right? Because I I think it's, as Stacy said, it's prudent to be. Sort of to heed the advice of our representation in in saying that the twenty percent. Is going to be cut and in, you know, I think I speak for all of us when I say I think we're faring, it would be higher than twenty. Right? But to make these decisions at. At this point, right? Because the last thing you want to do is sort of be caught off guard. Right? We want to at least sort of try and control this rudderless ship as much as we can. Going into, you know, the fall and we're going to have a better understanding of what our our number really is from the state.
When we had a deficit this year. We found out on July, whatever, fifteenth, that this year that we were going to have a deficit. We didn't vote what we were going to cut. We left that to our administrators to figure out how to manage. The fact that we didn't have the money to cover everything. Like, so that's why I'm a little confused about. Like, why we're doing this now.
How does this not affect the assessments, right? Because if total revenue goes down and total spending goes down.
Stays exactly the same.
stays exactly the same.
It's neutral.
Negative one thousand dollars, positive one thousand dollars, zero. Negative one point three million dollars. A debit of one point three million dollars or credit of one point three million dollars, zero.
So this should be the same gene if we. You know, basically kept the original thirteen percent, right? We were still getting the same amount from the the state. I don't know why I'm telling you this, you understand the basics of it. But, you know, we would be asking the. The towns for more, what their assessments were based off of our total budget, right? So at this point, it's. At, you know, seeing, especially now, seeing the need to get the money that was. You know, originally discussed and voted on back in February from the towns, knowing that we're getting this. That or or planning for this twenty percent reduction from the state. Right? It's we're trying to keep as as much of the services intact, as much as the. You know, staffing intact as possible. You know, knowing even that we. Didn't get everything we wanted back with our ask back in February. Now, we're, you know, we're hearing from the state, well, you're probably going to be about one, two, one point two million dollars. Or one point three million dollars. Short from, you know, our aid. And then having to try and get ahead of what that's going to look like if and when that become, you know, goes from being a. You know. Probability to, you know, an actuality. You know, and and again, just sort of circle back to what Michelle said is I think it just makes the most sense to be doing that now. And at the same time, right? This is the work, I I haven't put together the spreadsheet, right? Where where where, as we were all year long, the work was being done by Julie and Vinnie. And given to us, you know, for approval to make up that ground. Right? So it's them still doing the work and just coming to us. You know, for guidance and approval, which has been the case since July first, when we walked into the six hundred thousand dollar deficit. At the same time, you know, we also have to make sure that we're helping them as much as we can. You know. Mary Beth's already on. Her way in on July one, but we want to make sure that we're not replacing Vinnie on August one. You know, and and that he needs our support more than ever right now. So he's had the. Most heck of a time for the first year. I think anyone has ever had in this position. And, you know, and to just the fact that it keeps getting piled on, that I I think we need to be as supportive as we possibly can be, especially. To him in these times and then not just sort of place one hundred percent of the burden on him to solve the problem.
But totally agree. We need to be supportive of Vinnie and, you know, I'd rather be proactive than reactive in a couple of months and having to make those cuts. And I still think twenty percent being very conservative, both the towns and the FinComs haven't supported the budget before the COVID nineteen. And if we're not going to be, you know, sensitive to all this, I think this is just saying us up. For a really, you know, future problems. And, you know, we want, we want to keep Vinnie.
Well, here's.
We don't want him to leave.
This turn into me.
It's always about you, Vinnie. It's always about keeping you. So so my point is this. Our vote today does does nothing. It does, this vote, we're not even voting today, but this discussion today does nothing to mitigate. Our ass to the town. So if we want to do something that will decrease the ass to the town. Because they also have decreases in revenue expected or they, you know, we're expecting that they're going to have difficult times. We're not doing anything to address that. So we either need additional cuts or we need to use. Additional reserve funds in order to help with that. We're not even looking at those things right now. I don't even know if it's a good idea from what I'm seeing from the lister, from other regional districts, they are. They keep four percent, you know, we're only at three percent in our. Reserve funds, but I think. We have the towns telling us to cut another million dollars in addition to this out of our budget. And I'm saying what we're doing now is devastating, additional million dollars. Where would that come from?
We'd have to close with Ripper Cutler.
So I just think we need to like.
That's it, right? Just so everybody knows, right? Just just. To put it out there. That's what it is. Two point two million dollars is Cutler.
Yeah, but it's not just elimination of services because you still have to provide those services. So it doesn't, it doesn't net you actually the million dollars. I guess my thought is that this one point two million dollars is a total reduc, is a reduction in total budget, not so much the assessments of the towns, right? Because that was the other, that was the other thing that we were hearing from the towns is that they were seeing that the year over year increase was significantly higher than what they expected. Right? So now you're reducing another one point two million dollars from, you know, prior year, prior year budget.
Just making up for the lack of state aid, it doesn't even affect the assessment to the towns and so.
I know, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't considering, look. I'm not considering the talent, I mean, my consideration is to the district and what the district needs is not necessarily as a first priority. And then secondarily, what do the towns will be assessed, right? So in my, in my thinking. Like, this is more, this is a devastation to the district's overall budget and its needs. Right?
I think one thing, I I don't, I'll speak for myself, when it comes to the debt exclusion, like. That, the amount of money that's in our budget this year to pay for that debt exclusion is so minimal, it's fifteen hundred dollars. And those, those are. Monies that are needed for a whole host of reasons, either one, because we're going to need them to address furniture needs or two, to do the construction. So should we just discuss? That I think I'm committed to still putting that debt exclusion forward. I don't know how other people feel, but I think we have to spend quite a bit of time educating the voters. To help them understand that we're not asking for a million dollars. Up in next year, what we're asking for is a loan of a million dollars that will be paid back and it's fifteen hundred dollars next year.
I think it's fifteen thousand.
Why am I saying hundred? But you're right, Gene, it's fifteen thousand.
I don't want you to get misquoted here.
That would be a great, that would be a great deal. I'm sorry.
It would be, it would be. I don't want you to get misquoted here. Well, so I think, since you're taking it to this direction, I I agree with you that I think it's. I think it's. I think I think it's a good ask. To continue with the capital requests. I understand that the, at least Hamilton is putting off theirs. At least until the next town meeting, not in the, not the one in June that's anticipated. But I think, you know, the points that Vinnie or Julie made about. You know, if you actually want to do any real work in the buildings, you got to do it when the kids aren't there. And maybe the kids won't be there just because we won't be back in school, but you can't really bank on that. So there's a timing issue to have to address, but also I think, you know, as we saw, everybody went online. Again, there's a huge network infrastructure request that needs to be done. If we couldn't support that, we would be dead. If we couldn't support that, we would be dead in the water. I mean, of all the parents now who are struggling now, try to figure it out. Do we would have nothing? We would, we would be even in a worse shape, right? We already have crummy internet service in the two towns.
Right.
So, you know, and we've heard many years, you know, year after year, there is a safety need. You know, people are very concerned about the safety in the schools. That is, is being addressed to some, to some degree with this request. So I think there are, um, I think there are reasonable needs, not great timing, but I think that, you know, I think it's reasonable. That's my opinion is reasonable to continue with that capital request.
So, um, there was something about elementary school, something or other that was going to require a contract change.
There's a few things in there that would require a contract change, I believe.
Just one is included. Um, there are other ideas that would require contract changes that I think we could discuss in executive session.
Yeah, but which one was this?
Um, but the one that is included on the list is a reduction right here of our elementary specialists in art, physical education and music by one point one F T E. Um, so this allows us to use the district current staffing more efficiently. Actually, that contract language, the right way it's currently written was restrictive and required more staffing than we need. Um, this is just kind of right sizing the team, if you will. Um, so long as, you know, we are able to get that, that agreement. It doesn't change the amount of prep for our teachers. In fact, it, it just goes from them having fifty minute preps, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, to them having forty day, forty minute preps each day of the week.
And then on that same slide, the twenty-two club advisor stipends, is that like Model U N, Deca, Elementary School Chorus, those kinds of things? What is that?
The interest clubs is basically, it's any kind of club that, um, students may want, as long as there's a, a big enough group of them to attend. So this year it's things like, uh, yoga, uh, mock trial and, and Model U N, those are already separate stipends that aren't considered interest club stipends.
Is Deca in that twenty-two or is that its own?
I believe Deca has its own. Uh, I can confirm for you, but I'm pretty sure they have their own.
So, so
We tried to separate like curricular clubs from student service clubs. So like G S A or middle school LGBTQ club, like that's not, um, that's not an interest-based club, um, from the, the truly interest-based that Vinnie described.
So if you want to belong to Model U N or Mock Trial, are you paying a fee? Next year or this year?
Uh, not for those two, no. Uh, certain clubs you are, but for the two you just mentioned, no.
I think we need to look at divvying that up equitably. I don't think, I don't think it's fair for, and I'm going to call sports interest-based because it, it is, it's whatever you're interested in to pay seventy-five percent, curriculum ones pay zero and interest-based pay a hundred. So I think we need to look at a way that we can equitably share that.
So if, if my understanding is correct, these interest, the interest-based clubs are basically we give the students at the middle school and high school almost carte blanche and having the ability to, um, promote and create a club, whatever their club of their dreams is. They want to dodge it to Dragons Club. They want to have a, whatever.
Right.
And so these are, um, clubs that are currently not filled and not they're like, we're not reducing anything. We're just not filling these. Is that correct? Correct. They, they were utilized for F Y twenty, but this would be just not filling them for F Y twenty-one.
So if it existed this year, like it was the Japanese and culture club, let's call it that, it just wouldn't exist next year.
Correct.
I see. I understand it better. Thank you.
And to answer your question, in F Y twenty was the first year Deca had its own stipend. So it's not included in the interest clubs.
So some of our more academic clubs would be free and sports would have a fee.
The idea is to kind of go over all user fees for next year, um, to streamline all of them.
That's on your list for when we're not, okay.
It's been on my list for years. It kind of just
Yep, okay.
But now it's on the top for next year.
That's awesome. Okay. I don't think we're going to find a million dollars there. That, I mean, so it's more of an equity issue than it is a financial wellbeing issue.
Correct.
Well, I'll just say this too. I mean, in addition to, we already saw what we're doing. If we're concerned about state aid, right, in that these cuts will net to zero to the towns, basically, right? If we were to find another million and we're already concerned about what the impact, longer-term impact is to the district and to our students, to our teachers, finding another million or finding any additional cutting is really going to make it impossible probably to really climb out of this. I mean, if this isn't put into start contract, start, you know, to really, uh, anywhere the right words is, if it doesn't really put it into, um, into perspective, then I don't know what will, right? Cause we're going backwards. We're completely going backwards. If the whole idea is to bring more services in-house to reduce out of district costs, right? For tuition, for special education services, if we are concerned about offering programming that makes our, our, our high school students competitive. If it jeopardizes our accreditation, if, you know, we're concerned about bigger classroom sizes in the lower grades. Like we're, at this one point too, that we're doing with state aid, we're already there.
Right. We're already going against everything that, you know, we're hearing and we're working towards to try and resolve.
We hear from the community feedback too. We were looking for the superintendent. People wanted us to be, you know, top-ranked school.
Right. Um, on the reduction of the T A and preschool, does that limit our ability to have, um, uh, a fifty-fifty split in peers to, um, you know, kids who are attending for services?
No, we've already filled all of our peer slots for next year in our three classes and we've left a number of slots available for students needing early intervention. So, um, it doesn't limit our ability, um, to still charge tuition for those peer slots.
And then my, uh, my only other question is, um, the ten thousand dollars for the teacher in charge, that split across like three schools or four schoo- all five schools?
Yes.
Okay. So in elementary school, what happens when a principal's not there if we don't have the teacher in charge? Cause there's no, there's not like there's an assistant principal there.
So, um, my understanding is that the, the school secretary already steps in and fills those, those gaps. Um, our principals' contracts do require them to work all one hundred and eighty-four days that our staff are, um, in the building. So they're not taking vacation time during those school days. So it would just be a matter of making sure we have a clear communication and clear understanding across the team. If we're having a district meeting, say at central office, that if, if there's a building priority or need, the principals are able to return to their buildings. Um, and the, one of the things that we're fortunate about in Hamilton and one of them is that all of our schools are in a really close radius. Although sometimes it can take you quite a few minutes to get from one end to the other. Um, so that's, that's sort of the plan that they have.
Now, on this, um, Julie, how you put this, um, list of reductions for consideration. This was something that you, Vinnie, and the leadership team came up with.
So we worked one by one through members of the leadership team and talked with them. We started first with just like a brainstorm, like what ideas do you have? What, e- every single idea that somebody mentioned or that we thought of was considered and, and priced out. Um, and then we brought it back to, we met with the principals on May eighth, um, and fleshed out the list with them. We met with cabinet, um, and fleshed cabinet is like our executive leadership team, um, and fleshed out the list with them. Um, I'm not going to tell you that there's a hundred percent consensus about everything that's on this list for obvious reasons. Um, but again, we kept going back to those guiding questions, um, which I realized I didn't have, didn't show. Um, you know, what are the supports our students are going to need? How can we protect and preserve the classroom and how will we keep equity at the forefront? And so, you know, we kept coming back to that and saying, you know, some of these decisions, like will we, will we survive for a year? Sure. Or two? Sure. But we need to have a longer range view of what will be the implication over time. Um, and I would not be surprised if the leadership team and our new superintendent is coming back to you as soon as next budget cycle, telling you they need many of these things back in the budget because again, none of these things are things we would recommend that the district do for, um, all the reasons that we talked about and many more.
Yeah, I know this is really hard and it's really unfortunate what we're, we're going through because this, I mean, we've never seen this happen ever before. And, you know, even the state doesn't know where we're at. Vinnie, do you know, um, when we get the final payments that come in for the year for chapter seventy, transportation? And this, um, circuit breaker, will we get these payments before June thirtieth or what? Do we know what with all that's going on?
Yeah, they usually always happen on literally the last working day of June. So they wait till the very last minute, but it usually comes in at the last day.
Okay.
Is that lump sum or does that come in quarterly? Uh, chapter seventy is monthly, so we get twelve payments. Uh, circuit breaker, I believe is quarterly. Thanks.
Um, Julie, um, the elimination of the seventh, um, kindergarten class. Um, how safe? I, I know this is, it's just a you can't answer this, but you know, if we're looking at twenty-four, twenty-five now that, but that may change based on your pre-registration. I mean, twenty-eight, thirty kindergartners with one teacher. I mean, I, 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 like all our other safety issues, that, that could really put us in a tough, don't you feel a tough spot?
I absolutely do. I think we're challenged with COVID because we didn't get to have our regular registration cycle in March. We've launched on the eighth, our pre-registration form. I think within the first day or two, we had thirty people who had already pre-registered. Um, it'd be really helpful if anyone who has an incoming kindergartner did that, you know, it's a quick little Google form. It's not as lengthy as the whole registration packet, but that's really helpful for us to know kind of where we're at. So the class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-five are what we would experience if we had the exact same enrollment we have currently in kindergarten. Now, what I'd love to be able to say is that, well, the principals can make a choice depending on what enrollment numbers look like. They could choose to drop a third grade or, you know, to have a seventh kindergarten, but because the way our three elementary schools are, that would require reassigning children to new schools. Um, and I think you've all experienced that in the recent past and that can be traumatic and devastating. So we also are kind of, we're limited on, um, you know, some flexibility with class sizes because of just the way that we're spread across three, three schools in the community. So that, that is just another challenge that I, I would put out there. So yeah, you're running a risk that you could have kindergarten class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-five plus, um, depending on what those enrollment numbers look like.
May, may I?
Julie, is it, um, Cutler, um, not as without a, a TA right now, right? In their kindergarten classes and what's the class sizes there?
Well, we've tried to keep Cutler a little smaller. I think as the year went on, I think the most of their class sizes are nineteen or twenty. Um, I don't think they have a twenty-one. I think they might have one nineteen and one twenty, if I'm remembering correctly.
But that's because they don't have the T As.
But we, right. So, um, just for those who don't know, we're talking about our kindergarten classes do not have full-time teaching assistants. I think we're one of the few, if not only in the Commonwealth where that's not a norm yet. You know, that was one of our asks in our initial budget back in January. Um, so what we do do, um, through the, with the support of our director of curriculum, um, and the Title One grant is the schools, um, are able to get part-time teaching assistants that support the kindergarten classes. They don't start on day one because of the way the grant cycle runs. Um, but they do have part-time support at Bucker and Winthrop. This year, Cutler did not qualify for Title One funding because it's based on the number of free and reduced lunch um, applicants in your, in your building or recipients in your building, I should say. Um, so the way we tried to kind of offset that was by giving them slightly smaller class sizes.
May, may I add one thing to this conversation about class sizes? Um, as a way of an example, when they built Manchester Essex, the economy was good. And then the economy, so they built it to the number of, of enrollees they had. When the economy went bad, many parents took their kids out of private school, sent them back to public school. And when I was there, kids were eating their lunches on the floors in the hallways because there were not enough seats in the cafeteria. With the economy going the way it is, we may find kindergarten class size enrollment increase. We may find enrollment increases across the board. And, um, we're, we're going to end up larger class sizes, fewer teachers and trying to, uh, that's just something I wanted everyone to consider. The economy is going to take a while to recover and parents may send their kids back to private school, I mean, back to public school.
That's a really good point, Peter, that I actually have not thought of through all of these conversations.
So if we were to say to you, you know, we want to keep the seventh kindergarten class, that means you're going to have to find forty-seven thousand dollars somewhere else. Where would you look?
Variety of places we would look. I think it depends if we're only trying to find forty-seven thousand or if there's ten other things on this list, you tell me you want me to find other money for.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's at the point where it's going to be teachers. Um, you know, it's going to, we're, we're trying to buffer the classroom. We already are very, very thin, if not bare, when it comes to supplemental tier-two support. Um, as you've heard me talk about all year long. And so I, I mean, I would not recommend that we go there anymore. Um, you can't, you can't reduce an elementary class and any other grade. We're all at like twenty-two, twenty-four. Middle school class sizes are all at like twenty-four. I mean, honestly, it would, it would require some significant renegotiation of the middle school and high school prep time um, for us to find some efficiencies and be able to conserve, um, as many jobs as, as possible. Where that, there are some constraints right now with, with what we can do. And when you're at looking at programs, you know, one of the things we debated when we were looking at the middle school and high school schedule was do we, are we at a point where we can no longer offer band and chorus? Are we at a point where we can no longer offer world language at the middle school? Are we at a point where we can only offer, um, you know, two years of world language at the high school to meet the graduation requirement? Um, and for all the reasons you all explained earlier, you know, there's, there's serious implications of those things. Um, you know, we also, I mean, you just, you can't have all the things that our kids need and our families expect and reduce the budget by millions of dollars.
Have we looked at possibly, cause I, um, at possibly, um, putting middle school and high school together? At, you know, kind of trying to save money there some way because I know
It's on this list. It's on the list.
Uh, Georgetown has, um, you know, has, they now run it as one school.
We, we have seventh and eighth moving to a junior high model on this list in front of us. Um, I don't know if this is the
Well, I don't think Stacy was Stacy might not have the same information that you and I and Michelle Horgan had about that. So that might be where that question's coming from.
Um, but it is on one of the slide decks.
It's not the same information I'm talking about. It's a little bit different.
Yeah. So Stacy, I guess it depends. Um, we are looking at them being on the same schedule so that we can streamline classes. If you're thinking about literally running them as one school and that like eighth graders might be in classes with sophomores or
Nope, nope. I mean, just trying to run it kind of, I know on the same class schedule. And, um, they kind of run it as, um, I know Georgetown and, um, some other schools, they run it where, you know, they do have a T model for the middle school, but you know, they really try to consolidate everything to being run as, you know, But, you know, they really try to consolidate everything to being run as, you know, one school, but totally separate as far as schedules. So you've got the middle school schedule, but, and you've got the high school schedule and figure out how to do savings, kind of running, merging it together, but still separate schedules, kind of, you know, they're separate.
Do you mean they have, uh, do they have a shared principal? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Right. Yeah, we have talked about that. That is something that Hamilton-Wentham experienced not too long ago. Um, maybe eight, nine years ago, you guys all would probably remember, where there was one principal for the middle school and high school, and then there was two associate principals. Um, I do think, you know, that is a model that you could explore. I don't think that's a decision you want to make um, in the middle of May for the fall, you know, of this year. Because I would, I think you would want to have a lot of stakeholder involvement in that and you would want to look at programming and expectations of those roles. Um, to really do that well, because my understanding is that it was done before as, I don't know if it was a cost-saving measure or just a staffing reason. Um, but it only lasted for two years. And my other concern would be making dramatic changes to your building leadership in the middle of a crisis. Does not seem, um, if you don't have to do that, I, it's not something that I would certainly recommend at this moment.
Well, and also, uh, you know, after discussing it a little bit um, as part of negotiations, it also is an opportunity for the su, the new superintendent to come in and, and look at that system holistically. Um, after some of these changes are made, to see what kind of leadership is needed to make that run. Instead of like, looking at it in a crisis where we're just trying to pinch a penny to make it work. Um, so I think it could be one of those things that we look at for next year that could be a way of dealing with next year's fiscal crisis. Um, you know, so it might be something we want to keep as top, top of mind.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important to sort of remind everyone that this is definitely a, a multi-tiered approach, right? Um, in, in, this even sort of ties back into what you were saying earlier, Michelle, about like, why are we making decisions now? We don't know, and we could be, you know, doing this in the, in, in the fall because I think we're gonna be having a very smart uh, conversation in the fall anyway. Even if we had, you know, make these decisions now to figure out what FY twenty-two is gonna look like. Um, and, you know, i, 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 we're gonna have to then get creative with, you know, but having the luxury of a little bit more time. Uh, excuse me, um, and then a little bit better of an understanding of where FY twenty-one left us and, and what our economy center looked like at that point, you know, in, in five or six months.
Well, also, if you vote to reduce the budget, then when you vote to put some of these things back in, that causes the percent increase to be greater in the future. Even though, but if you leave the, but, and I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I haven't like, worked out the numbers and written it down, but I think if you leave the budget the same and you just spend less money, then when you go to ask for the new budget, your budget-to-budget increase is less, your budget-to-actual increase would be greater, but, you know.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think what, you see, you're, you're, you make perfect sense in a very sort of basic view of, of all this, right? In, 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 I'm not saying that you're, it, it's because you're a complex understanding, right? So I don't want to say it's because it's your basic, it's, you're trying to sort of bring it down to that denominator that everybody understands. So next year, there's not the sticker shock of us suddenly having this, right? So, so I, I like, while I really see where you're coming from, and I like that. At the same time, I think it's really important that, you know, people hear and know that, you know, this is why, right? So if we make these cuts right now, this is why that number looks the way it does this year. You know, no matter how much we said it this year, right, when that first, that thirteen percent number first came out. I still don't think i, i, as well of a job as we like to think that we did sort of explaining why, you know, starting the year with that six-hundred-thousand de, uh, dollar deficit. Um, you know, i, i, this is starting the year at two points, right? So the thirteen wasn't a true thirteen. It, it really is a hard, hard thing for people to comprehend, right? So, so I like the fact that you're sort of thinking that, like, if we keep this number here, then next year, you know, knowing there will be shortcomings, that there's, there's less to make up. I, I just think it's, it's very risky management, right? It's just very risky personnel management to, to, to do that, right? Because I, I don't know, maybe I actually, I'm misunderstanding that. I'm thinking about it a little bit more as I go.
It's just the budget number doesn't change.
Right, alright, so that's what I was just gonna ask.
But the other thing is, is I'm not, the only, the, the most important reason to do that would be because of levy limit. And now that I'm thinking about it, when you're thinking about, I think the levy limit gets set on the assessment, not on the budget.
Right, so.
I just think we need to be, we just need to be proactive, you know, based on what our state reps have told us. And um, not have to worry about this later. We need to be proactive, not reactive. And, you know, that, it might be even worse. I just saw numbers for, um, talking about New Jersey was talking about forty percent less. So, you know, we need to think, you know, kind of reality where people are, where the state is, where our schools are, unfortunately, is hard decisions we have to make.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
Fine, but we have to understand that we're asking people for an override. Okay, we're gonna be asking people in Wentham for a gigantic override and a cut. All of these cuts. So I think unless we want to, if we are not reducing any ask to the town by any amount. So all of these cuts, right? If we decide to hike all of these cuts and our override doesn't pass, this is just the tip of the iceberg. So I would like to see a more comprehensive list of what the rest of the iceberg looks like. I know, I pers, I personally think unfortunately, we're bringing, you know, this budget is a high budget, you know? And I'm having a difficult time swallowing even that, so it, but we have to make so many cuts. It's just really hard to think about how to do this. It's something we need to think about. We need to be able to convince voters, like, do, do, do you see what's here? Okay, so what's here is, it hurts a little bit because there's not really a lot here I'm super passionate about. But if the override doesn't pass, this is what we're looking at. So I, I feel like this right here is the tip of the iceberg and so we need to be able to tell people what the rest of the iceberg looks like.
I can give you a sense, okay?
Thank you.
You not have an athletic department. You would, you would have minimum graduation requirements. You would have no world language at the middle school. You would have no band and chorus, um, because there's, at the high school or, or elementary, or I'm sorry, or middle school or elementary, frankly. Um, and, and you'd still, that'd still get you with all of those reductions, maybe about five-hundred-thousand dollars after you factor unemployment. And so that's what's next, like, thinking of those things, right? Because you, you have to provide basics, like, you could then decide you don't want to have a guidance department or you don't want to have, but you know, like, even then, so that's what, Vinnie? Another two-hundred-thousand dollars maybe, after you factor in. So now we're seven-hundred-thousand dollars lower. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there. How many kids are tracing out?
How many kids are tracing out? The other thing we have to factor in is, right, alright, so US dues came out a few weeks ago. We're number thirty in the state now. We start making all these cuts. We start dropping, property values start dropping, then home assessments start coming in. So then the town revenue stop, start, you know, dropping. So it's like, what you have to be surgical. We have to cut surgically.
So to be sort of more clear, like, the iceberg that the town is asking us to go to does not look like it's in the best interest of the towns overall.
This is in the best interest of the town.
Yeah. Michelle, I'm, I'm totally there with you because I think the language is very important. This is why the year-over-year increase of the eight-point-four-seven percent is the worst metric for us to be talking about. The thirty-nine, the thirty-nine million dollar budget, thirty-eight million dollar budget is what the school district needed to provide for a high-quality education for all students, right? At the point, right? It's not, you know, it, it's not a high budget or low budget. It's what the district needs. This is a thirty-nine million dollar district. It's not an eight-point-four-seven percent increase budget. That, that makes, you know, so I'm totally there with you. I, I totally understand what you're saying about next year. If we keep, if we don't make any cuts now, the year-over-year increase will actually be lower than the eight-point-four-seven percent. If that's the only metric we're, we're talking about, then yeah, we should not do anything now. But that's why, that's why in my mind, the assessment was not an issue. Uh, is not my highest priority of trying to figure it out. My issue was like, we know we're gonna get lower revenues, right? And we shouldn't be going into the next year not actually, not recognizing some of that.
Yeah.
So.
And honestly.
I'm torn, because I, I totally understand where you're, you're going, Michelle. I totally understand what you're saying. I, I don't know what a good solution is. I really don't. I really don't. But I think you're right, though. The language of how we frame this is really, really important, right? Because we presented, Julie and Vinnie presented right now, what one-point-two million dollars in cuts would be. Anything more than that, you know, forget about Chinese. Forget about athletics. Forget about the, you know, she just rattled off a list, just right off the top of her head of like, four things.
And, and you could have other creative options, like maybe only um, elementary kids come to school, you know, three days a week and you go on a rotating schedule because you don't have enough staff for them to come five days a week. Maybe you have to split the day and some grades only go half-day and they, there's an AM and a PM shift. I mean, it, it literally gets to that if you're talking about getting our budget to a point where you don't need an override in Wentham. Because that's two-point-one million dollars less than this for us to not need an override, ride in Wentham. And then that takes care of the Hamilton issue where they want our budget to only be a five percent increase or less. That's what it would take. That would be a three-point-four million dollar, that's closing, that's two whole elementary schools budget, basically, almost, right? So you'd have to do really unconventional things. And I think, you know, I'll speak for myself. I don't want to project my um, feelings or experience on anyone else. I, I don't know how people will work if their children don't go to school five days a week.
Right. Okay, um, Julie or Vinnie, what would a level service budget be? What percentage would that be at level service?
What percentage would that be?
Yeah, the budget enrolled up just our contractual obligations.
Didn't add in all the new staff?
Or anything, if you just did contractual obligations.
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I can look in previous slides. I thought we, I think we did that at one point. I'll, I'll look for you while you.
Yeah, I think four-point-not-eight or nine percent, Vinnie.
I thought that was something like that.
About eight-hundred-thousand dollars for all of our contractual obligations. That does include some new staff, you know, a new position or two, though. Um, but it would be at least four-and-a-half to four-point-eight percent over FY twenty-approved. So here was your FY twenty-approved. You see it on the slide right here. And a percent is about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, Vinnie?
Yeah.
So.
Three-hundred-and-fifty.
Three-fifty. So if you had just your FY twenty plus your contractual obligations, you'd still be at about a four-and-a-half percent increase. But remember, you're not just rolling over your staff. You have out-of-district placements as well. And that was about four-hundred-thousand dollars itself.
Was that?
Actually, it was about eight-hundred-thousand dollars over FY twenty-approved.
Was that, was that in that four-point-five percent that you just talked about?
No, 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 that's different. That's a tuition line. That's not.
Oh, well, I, yeah, well, I consider that a contractual obligation because aren't we contractually obligated to provide those placements?
Um, yes, I thought she just, for employees.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, yeah, I could see where that's confusing. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
But that was an increase wa, um, for the added district of the eight-hundred to nine-hundred, right? So that was added, right? That's part of the level service because we have to do that, like.
Yeah.
Do we want to go to executive session? Because I think there's some things to talk about in there that also relate to this that might.
I had the same idea.
But we need to also talk about the MOU too.
Yes.
As a group? Before we go to exec, yes. I didn't know that that was gonna be the whole group, so I didn't read it. We talked about it last meeting. When we decided to make this meeting at four o'clock, we talked about this being the whole group discussing it. Didn't understand that, sorry. I thought the finance working group was gonna break off separately and approve the MOU and then when it was gonna come to us on the twentieth, so I didn't, I haven't read it, so I won't, I'll abstain. Well, we basically talked, we talked and approved the MOU as it was before. We were gonna discuss any last-minute changes, which I had um, put on there, which is, if someone can go move that, whoever's controlling, go down to section six. Um, this is the only thing that the um, working group did not know um, that we made a change, because I, I will say it was my fault. I left this piece out. Of, I thought I had everything, we were all set with our MOU as previously, previously discussed. Um, but then legal had an issue with um, giving, um, making the give-back of money in five years. Um, because um, schools cannot do that. And so this um, language that was put in, thank, thank you to um, Peter Gordo. We um, we worked on this last minute and legal approved it. And so the MOU is ready to go as we put here. So I just, as you see what's in red are the changes from what the, our working group had approved.
So Stacy, I would just worry that this change, this now says that the project has to commence within two years. Um, and the feasibility of that seems significantly low, lower given the current situation. But I don't know how we're defining.
It's two years of once they give us the money.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I didn't read that.
And so that um, that gives us the time. And they're gonna give it once we have, and this is after we have um, you know, the feasibility study and they, um, and they are going to start. Um, and once we get approval, first of all, for that feasibility study, final study, and um, then they're gonna go back and take a couple of years to fund rate. And we are putting it then in our schedule, once we approve it and the towns approve it. So then after that, you know, it's basic, it's some years down the road.
I, I read this and I, I liked it. I, there's safeguards in there, so each, each step is contingent upon the previous step, so it's not like this. Don't worry.
Do you want me to make a motion or do you want to table it or?
What's it thought on table? Look it up, sorry.
I, I think it's okay to go ahead. And if the working group, Jean and Michelle Horgan are okay with it, this is something I think we could put forward to our whole school committee as this is a finalized MOU that we've put together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I, I just read the, the changes. I think those are, um, it makes sense and I, I understand what, why they're there.
I, I agree. I'm also, I'm fine with it.
So you would make a motion and then after the second, there would be the discussion.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School District uh, School Committee accepts the MOU between the Hamilton-Wentham School Committee and the Hamilton-Wentham Towns United for Recreational Fields as stated in this exhibit.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? So the thought was, and correct me if I'm wrong, when I was in viewing your meeting last week, that there's a few changes to be made here, but that you had gone through the sort of meat potatoes of, of the MOU already, and you'll feel comfortable bringing it forward. I, I think it's a, a good, good understanding. I have not read the changes since they came in today, but oh, thank you. But, yeah, I mean, I like the idea of actually having this finally in place. It did, it's been a long time coming to try and, you know, even though right now we're sort of in crisis mode, to, to actually look to really partnering up with our community resources to, you know, look to the future of actually building up our facilities and our sports infrastructure.
Especially when all, I mean, I shouldn't say all, but a lot of our sports are going are off-site, and so we're spending extra money for having sports off-site, because our fields right now are in such bad shape that we can't even play on our own fields.
Well, hopefully a spring off will help them recover a little bit, so we can get another couple of years out of them before we can actually put this to good use.
Okay, should we go to a vote?
I think so. Any other discussion? All right, I'll go right down the line. Michelle Horgan. Oh, go ahead, Michelle. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
My only question is, is what is the difference between voting it today and voting it next Wednesday?
What would be your concern on why we wouldn't vote it today?
I will abstain because I did not get the opportunity to read it. Because when we talked about having this meeting as part of the finance working group, it was my understanding that we were only discussing the budget as the group, and that the MOU was going to be discussed by them and then brought to our meeting on the 20th.
I have no problem, no problem with that.
I don't, I don't mind waiting either. It's one week.
I think it was probably just more the fact that it was done and just a sort of a show of good faith with the TERF committee that, you know, well, all right, we're done. Let's get moving. I can see that, that being the only reason and why you'd want to do it instead of just waiting until next week, but, um, but yeah, I mean, so I have no problem tabling this unless anyone objects, just for the sake of just being able to give it a closer, a closer look with, with the final edits. Do you have an objection? All right, then at that point, we'll table this till the meeting on the 20th.
David, do you have to have a motion to table it, like?
I don't think.
Because we have.
But I mean, I guess it would hurt.
Motion on the floor, you do.
Okay, I make a motion that, I make a motion that we table the MOU between the Hamilton-Wenham School District and the Hamilton-Wenham TERF group.
Second. Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
Peter Walczak?
Yes.
Uh, David Plato is a yes.
What happened to the original motion that's been seconded? Do we, do we do anything with that?
It's been tabled.
So, okay, that's been tabled.
So the next time you come together, you'll have a motion to untable the motion, and then.
Now I'm hip to you, right? Okay.
Ah, okay. I've got nothing for chairs report, committee reports, anything to come in? This should all be cut out anyway. Anything from the capital finance planning? I think meeting tomorrow, correct?
I think we covered it.
All right. Policy Subcommittee.
Just the same thing. We're having the hearing next week.
Okay. Negotiation Subcommittee.
Meeting on the 18th with the custodial union, and then on the 21st, again, with the Hamilton-Wenham Educators Union.
All right.
Association. And those have been posted.
Great. All right, on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want anything pulled?
Okay, I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham School Committee accepts the consent agenda as presented in this agenda, and no changes can be made. Second.
Jean Lee with the second. Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Stacy Metternich.
Abstain.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
Peter Walczak.
Yes.
David Plato is a yes. All right. Uh, any other topics that we want to bring up for next week's meeting?
Um, just so you know, that the nomination for the outstanding partner is ready to go, and it should be already linked to the agenda for next Wednesday.
Thank you, Michelle.
I have a question that might be part of the conversation. Do we know how many residents, students in Hamilton or Wenham who are residents here who go to private schools?
I think the number exists someplace.
It just might give us an idea of how many might come back to public school.
Oh, I think if anything, you sort of look, look back at like 2008 and try and base your numbers off of, off of that, see, see if there was a boom from 2008 to 2009.
I think Julie told us earlier this year, it's like 20% of the students.
Yeah, I can't remember. Um, for next meeting, I, I don't know if you want to say this now as a reminder, we'll post that, post that agenda tomorrow as we typically do the Friday before, and there will also be a Q and A that's going to have a brief message from the school committee and an opportunity for people to submit questions about the budget reductions that were discussed tonight, or other budget reductions, or ideas, concerns, thoughts that the community has. And then during the public hearing, one of the school committees will moderate and synthesize those questions while also taking questions through the chat, the Zoom chat, live and in time during the public hearing. And so there will be two public hearings next Wednesday, one on our religious observances policy and one on FY21 budget reductions.
Yeah, one thing, I don't know if this is the way we set it up, but on some webinars I've been doing with the DES through Zoom, there's a chat, and then there's a Q and A window. I, I don't know if there's a way we can set up a Q and A window that's separate, maybe.
I'll figure out how to do it.
I don't know. Yeah, I, I didn't see it in the setup, so I just don't know how, but I have seen it working, so it must be there somewhere.
Can we also get an update from Eric Tracy about the Q3 options?
Yes.
I've asked for the last, last couple of meetings, and I thought he would get back.
Well, tonight I thought we were just focusing on the budget and the MOU.
No, that, that's fine, but even he was supposed to last meeting and the meeting before that, so I'm just saying he.
Okay, that's my fault. I'll take, I'll talk with Eric about that. Okay, thank you.
So we have to go to the other link after we adjourn, right?
I'll send everyone.
I thought it was muted, all right. All right, at this point, I move to go to executive session for purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Also move to, move to executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to all collective bargaining groups and not reconvene in open session. Roll call, vote. Michelle Bailey.
Um, I think you need to identify the people or persons in the first motion.
So.
People, persons, or groups. Is it all unions in that one, or is it a individual?
Collective bargaining sessions, the contract negotiations of non-union personnel.
I think that's a specific person. No, it's all, all. Okay, great. Thank you. Then I say yes.
Uh, Jean Lee.
He pointed.
So, yeah, okay. Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
Peter Walczak?
Yes.
David Plato is a yes.